Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. Ms. Quigley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the committee, members of the board, our agenda is in order and ready for approval. We would like to recommend that items 38 and 39 be taken together. 38 is to conduct a public hearing for the proposed fare adjustment, and 39 is to receive a report on the proposed fare adjustment. We believe that those can be taken together.
Very good.
Mr. Chair. May I ask that item 25 be set aside from the consent just for discussion? And then I would move approval with 38 and 39 together and just setting 25 aside for discussion. Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number two is to receive the general manager's report. First, we'd like to recognize 40 high school seniors who are with us today who are going, hopefully, going to go home extra happy as we unveil the results of RTC's partnership with Coca-Cola and the Clark County School District. Our three organizations have teamed up to sponsor a laptop scholarship program that has asked local high school seniors to write an essay on the topic of how can you reduce your carbon footprint by using the services offered by the RTC? We received over 175 entries to the contest this year, and we're very proud of the entries and of the winners. You know, Clark County School District takes a lot of criticism for its effectiveness, but I can tell you, we have got some students who truly can write, and you're looking at some of them in front of you. Before we announce the names of the winning students -- We do need to acknowledge our partners. I want to acknowledge Ms. Judy Myers. Is she in the audience with us today? All right. Judy is probably a well-known face to a lot of you, but for those of you who don't know, she is the coordinator for the school's community partnership program, and it's a very effective program at getting the community matched with the school and providing better services and better community support. I'd also like to thank Joe Knight, who's the district sales manager with Coca-Cola, and I'd like to ask him to come forward and say a few words.
Mr. Knight, would you like to step forward and say a few words? And for those parents and family members with the cameras, don't be shy. Come on down.
Good morning. As I said, my name is Joe Knight, and I'm a representative of Coca-Cola Company. I've got a little Barry White creeping into my voice this morning. I've got a cold coming on in the summer, so please forgive me. On behalf of Coca-Cola Company of Las Vegas, we're very proud to be able to play a part in today's events with the laptop giveaway and the Regional Transportation Committee of Southern Nevada. Thank you very much for that. The type of partnership emphasizes the synergy between both of our organizations and efforts, not only to provide highest quality, but the RTC through their transportation services and Coca-Cola through their beverage portfolio, but also, more importantly, to take a leadership role in the efforts around sustainability and specifically reducing our carbon footprints in Southern Nevada. Through taking action on reducing our carbon footprints, it's critical, it's just important to take a leadership role in communicating and educating our community on what we're doing and why it's important to our community and the environment in general. That's why our partnership program is all about today. Coca-Cola has what we call the 2020 Vision, and it surrounds five pillars of sustainability, and they are energy conservation and climate change, water stewardship, sustainable packaging and recycling, balanced and active lifestyle, and diverse and inclusive culture. Today, the primary focus is in the area of energy conservation and climate control. How can you reduce your carbon footprint through the services offered by the RTC? We appreciate the opportunity to support the RTC and the Las Vegas community. We want to commend all the students for submitting the essays, and we want to congratulate all of the winners today. Thank you for being stewards of our planet. Thank you very much.
Now, we'd like to announce the names, and you will receive your laptops outside the chambers. We've got Genevieve Pichtler, Jenner Tatts, Charles Nguyen, Michaela Stevens, Martin Bernardino, Destiny Hogan, Metica Holmes, Laquita Johnson, Ashley Cluse, Von Peen, Gershon Narwhal Singh, Susana Gaspar Hernandez, Andrea Lopez, Aragon Bailon, Sarah Story, Dulce Yurate, Stephen Nolan, Adrian Jackson, Mariana Sarmiento, and Shane Marshall. So, thank you very much, and congratulations. (applause) All right. Are we doing this? Are we doing any?
Excuse me. Stephanie and Stephen Lang, we're not mentioned.
Oh, okay.
Anthony Jones.
All right. Shane Marshall? Do we not get Shane Marshall? All right. Raise your hand if we didn't get you. Well, thank you. All right. Okay. Call out your names.
Mr. Chair.
Andy Heewong.
Stephanie Yorn.
Anthony Jones.
Stephen Meyer.
Destiny Hogan.
Ashley Cluse.
Christina Gonzalez.
Metica Holmes.
Adrian Jackson.
Paula Bassett.
Martin Bernardino.
Stephen Nolan.
Mary Elias.
Ariana Sarmiento.
Chris Allen.
Rachel Clinton.
Charles Nguyen.
Sarah Story.
Von Peen.
Jenner Tatts.
Yeah, I think you have that.
Michaela Stevens.
Shane Marshall.
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 Right, or at least don't go out that way in the valley.
But, but yes, and this is the weekend, and again, I would like, thank you Commissioner, is that I realize that traffic and work zones are a challenge, and we do really appreciate the traveling public's patience and, and understand the, the impact that it has. At the end of the day, when it does get open, we do have good projects, and so appreciate and thank everyone, and if you do have some questions, we have our PIO, and we try to get the word out on, through our website and, and through other means to let people, but this is a challenging weekend.
Absolutely, and I, and I think RTC will make accommodations then based on their routes, but I have to say that the, the office has been far more open with Project Neon. I know Lois and I have attended a few of those meetings, and it's just, the outreach has been much better, so don't let it stop. It's been very positive. No matter if people, they just need a place to vent if that's the case, or at least understand where things are going, so keep up that good work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Rudy, if Commissioner G gets near any equipment, don't let her on.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I wanted to reiterate what Chris said about our working relationships, and when our residents have attended these meetings, which we've held in the last year or so, they really felt that they were listened to. They really felt that we were trying to help them, and I know it's from your office and from all the other individuals who have helped. I know we're going to miss you a lot, and do the best you can to make it continue as well as it's done so far. And lastly, I want to say, dig it, because in the ward I represent. And I went out there with a couple of members of my staff, and I must tell you, women particularly love that. They love having their controls on those big machines and-
We don't fight over other people's equipment.
Very good.
Anyway, just to tell you that it is a fun thing to go and see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, your fourth item is to conduct a comment period for your first citizen's participation.
Okay. Today is unique. I just want to, first of all, this is the public comment period that people are allowed to speak on today's RTC agenda. Some have already filled out cards for number 38 and 39, so I would encourage you to wait. That likewise will be a public hearing. There's no need for you to stand up and speak on 38 and 39 at this time and when the agenda item comes up before us. You're welcome to, but to save some redundancy. And then at the end of the meeting, we always take public comment as far as general citizen concerns. So, this is the time set aside for public comment on a specific agenda, and is there anyone wishing to speak? Please step forward. And those that have filled out 38 and 39, we have your name, so you will certainly be given the opportunity when that agenda item comes forward. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is James Richard Lucas, and I have a proposal. Take the seats out, get the let-out. That is, if you take the seats out, except for the old, the disabled, the pregnant, the mothers with children, you will save costs, perhaps you will save the monthly fare on the fixed transit route. People have an unjustified expectation of entitlement to sit down on a bus. This is a service that is provided by the taxpayers and the people of this state and country, and it also may have the additional motive to stir people to get out and walk. I was waiting for the 206 at about 9:00 PM last Tuesday night at Charleston and Eastern, and a black man about 50 years old with no right leg and no prosthesis came walking by hobbling with a ramshackle aluminum walker. He has the incentive and motivation to walk. Of course, it's a courtesy provided by the citizenry that it recognizes he can use a little assistance to get around. The other thing is economists like to talk about incentives, and they have a verb, incentivize. They like to incentivize people. All right, the people who ride a bus don't have a car, so if they have to stand up on the bus, maybe this will incentivize them to work hard, save their money, buy a car, and clog the freeways. So, this will boost the economy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker, Jose Mendoza, Jr.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I would wait, but I have to attend to an executive board meeting. First of all, I would like to start to thank the RTC staff for meeting with the ATU staff yesterday to discuss the Commissioners' intent to split the system. It was very interesting, and we did have an input on that, and we want to take, to thank the RTC staff on that. We also want to thank the RTC staff for their praise on the operators and the maintenance people who work for Veolia. We are the hard-working people who make the system run, and we are actually, in, in all due respect, operators are underpaid, but that's to be dealt with next, next year. Also, our international vice president, vice president came down and also spoke with the RTC staff and did make a, a comment about a possible federal complaint under 13C for reorganizational structure. So, we seriously think that the RTC Commissioners should look into that before they vote on splitting the system. We ask the Commissioners not to split the system. We feel that there are almost 1,000 employees that the livelihoods are in your hands, and not only that, also the writing public as well. We also feel that if there's going to be two private contractors to run the system, we're going to have to negotiate two CBAs with them, and in no time do we want to have any type of work stoppage. So, we also ask the Commissioners to consider that before they move forward on approving for two private contractors. Thank you very much, and you guys have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Alec Altman on Agenda Items 6 and 7.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Alec Altman, 105 Grove Street, Henderson. I'm here representing the Nevada chapter of the American Traffic Safety Services Association. I just would encourage you to approve Agenda Item 6 and Agenda Item 7, and I'd like to thank staff for their hard work in, in putting together our requested revisions, and Mr. Cedarburg's office as well, and working with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Altman. Patricia Anderson?
Good morning, everyone. I know I spoke to Larry Brown. I had a conference with him this week. I know he said he wanted to speak with me, so I don't know if he wants to talk with me now, or he wants me to wait a little while, whatever, on the decision we had on the meeting we had last, on the 8th. It's up to you. You know, there's some things that, there were confidential things that we talked about, and some things I don't know if you want to talk to me privately, or you want me to talk-
And this is on a specific agenda item. You can make general comments at the end of the meeting. So, are you speaking on a specific item?
Well, speaking on the drivers and everything like that, that type of thing we were talking about.
Okay.
The drivers actually-
So, that may be better left at the end of the meeting?
Left, left.
And we can certainly, I'll, I'll share with my colleagues our meeting. I thought it was a very productive-
Okay, fine. Okay, thank you.
James Lucas? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on a specific agenda item? Other than Items 38 and 39? Okay. Tina, would you read?
Yes. Item number 38 is to conduct a public hearing for the proposed- Item number 38 is to conduct a public hearing for the proposed fare adjustment, and Item 39 was to receive a report from staff on the public comments received for the proposed fare adjustment and direct staff accordingly.
On the bus routes and rates and paratransit, we're going to allow you to speak.
Yeah, when I'm interested in talking about, I'm going to keep the rates down if they can.
Okay, and that's, that's separate. That will be 38 and 39, and we will give everybody the opportunity to speak.
Just for clarity, is it that you're suggesting that those who want to speak on 38 and 39 wait to work to get in?
Yes, yes. Yeah, if, if anybody is pressed for time, we'll, we'll get to it in a relatively short time.
According to what time, you know, the end will be, I have a paratransit bus schedule that will be on the 10th of the 8th.
We'll make, we'll make sure you're the first speaker. The second speaker. All right, we'll, we'll, we'll get moving quickly then. All right, we'll, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Very good. Next up is your consent agenda, which is Items 5 through 36. I understand at the request of Commissioner G, we will be pulling 25.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Item number 25, to approve agreement number 10-096-A between the RTC and Ben Joyce Art LLC for the RTC Arts and Transit Program Boulder Highway Express in the amount of not to exceed $249,446.76, and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement. This is for action.
Commissioner?
Thank you. I, I saw the artwork, and it's in our backpack, but I have color if anybody wants to see it. I just wanted to, to note, it is not a local firm, but it was local art folks that actually made the select, the final selection, but I believe, I believe there's a commitment on behalf of the business to use as much local supply material and so forth as they possibly can, and I just wanted to get that on the record. And are you-
That is correct. The, actually, the installer, Chairman Lydia Bolinski, I was the analyst assigned, the installer for the project is a local woman-owned DBE business, her FEI Construction.
Okay, thank you. And I just, I thought it was, because it came up in the county, we're trying to do as much as we can on the local side, but, and we have a lot of local artists who unfortunately aren't working, but you have to, it's competitive, and that's the key piece. So, I would move approval with noting that, Mr. Chair.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Before we move on to Item Number 37, I want to let those who rode paratransit today that the vehicles will wait for them until they've got a chance to participate in the public process.
Okay, let, let's repeat that. Those that do have that 1028 and 1030 paratransit pickups, we have instructed the drivers to stay. We'll, we'll strike that from the public record, but I'll talk to you later on. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item Number 37 will be handled by our Assistant General Manager, Jerry Keating.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Am I on here? Hello? Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item 37 is to approve and authorize the chairman to sign an employment agreement for services of the new-appointed General Manager Christina Tina Quigley. On April 12, 2012, the Commission voted unanimously to approve Ms. Quigley as the next General Manager of the RTC, and instructed Assistant General Manager over Human Resources, which is me, to negotiate the terms of Ms. Quigley's employment contract through the execution of the employment agreement. The negotiation has been completed, and it's recommended that the employment agreement between Ms. Quigley and the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada be approved. For your action.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner June Kiliani?
Thank you. I've gone through a few of these, just some wordsmithing, I think, more than anything else, and then gone over it with Tina as well. In the Item C on page 2, I think that's still page 2, the 90-day advance termination is pretty standard throughout our group. Do we ever add language upon review and approval of the board, or is that just implied?
Based on the way it's written, it's just implied, but we can certainly add that language.
I don't think it changes, but it just clarifies the intent, and I think that that's positive.
And that is, again, upon review and approval?
The term employed shall not be construed to include occasional teaching, writing, or consulting services, and Tina has agreed to delete the term consulting services. I don't think we want to put a GM in that kind of a predicament of being perceived as consulting with anybody. It did, in one of our contracts, for our manager, we used the term exclusively employed, and then we defined the term exclusive employment shall not be construed to include occasional teaching or writing. And so, maybe it, it gives the standard. You work for us, but you can, you're still able to do those options, so I would just suggest that language twist. We're missing just cause language in the termination for, for severance pay?
This should be Section 4?
Section 4.
Letter A?
And then it's referred to but not spelled out in Section 6 under salary, and I would suggest to be out of a paragraph that says the following. Ms. Quigley will be given an annual performance evaluation in January of each year commencing with January 2013, or whatever that would be, and shall be eligible for salary increase upon that time. That way, it's very clear that we will do an annual evaluation, which we did finally, we got into the habit of doing, but it didn't spell it out in this contract nor the previous one, so I thought it should be clear. And then you refer later into the next paragraph, upon yearly performance. You already had that, but there was no, so probably should go in between those two paragraphs, I'm going to guess. And then on Section 8, outside activities, employee shall not spend more than 10 hours per month rather than per week, and we would delete consulting there as well. And it said receipts, you showed me that. Okay, and that would be my suggested changes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Those-
Mr. Chairman, in Section 4, in reference to just cause, I, I'd need clarification from the Commissioner. It does state halfway through that any event employee is terminated of her conviction of any illegal act, or that the RTC has just cause, and then it explains just cause a little bit later on. I just don't know if it's on your-
Okay, and I, I was probably thinking more, maybe Henderson can give me guidance. This is actually better language than what I've seen in some. Previous ones were so limiting that only if you get busted for something, then we couldn't terminate you. And at some point, if this board feels, whoever it may be, we should have the authority to be able to do that. Now, just cause, I don't, I wanted to make sure we didn't get into the same situation that Henderson did with their manager, with no disrespect, and so if we could just make sure that language is clear with regarding our authority to be able to terminate if we so choose, but also her rights or whoever would be in that position. So, just double-check that part of it.
Absolutely. I, I don't want to be accused of plagiarism, but this language came specifically out of Jacob Snow's new contract as city manager of Henderson, as well as their city attorney's language. So, I will double-check it, but it should be the same exact language, because I know we wanted a tighter grip on just cause.
Yeah, because Mr. Snow's previous one had no language, so-
And we did modify our contracts.
But I will double-check that.
Okay, thank you. No further questions or changes. I would make the suggestion to approve Item 37 with those-
Okay, and I'll just ask, with those changes to some of the language, are we still within the posted contract?
Yes, I don't believe any of those are so substantive that it would change anything, and by giving the direction today, you could approve it with those changes made on the record.
Very good. Is a motion on the floor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
And for clarity's sake, then they would bring back that as a written, but that way, we've got it for the record, and then it's very clear. Congratulations.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go on to Item Number 38, and we mentioned we'd take it with 39. 38 is to conduct a public hearing for the proposed fare adjustment, and 39 to receive a report on public comments received for the proposed fare adjustment and direct staff accordingly. We have some slides for you. As you recall, in March, we brought forward to you the recommendations of the RTC's Fair Working Group. This working group was comprised of stakeholders from the community who were asked to help the RTC address our budget challenges. Those challenges included a decline in sales tax revenue combined with an increased demand for paratransit service. So, the working group recommendations were presented to you back in March, and we began a 60-day public comment period, and you have in front of you a, a stack of papers, which is a collection of those public comments, if you care to peruse. Reviewing the original recommendations, so we have seven of them. The first one was to take the Strip's 24-hour pass and increase it from $7 to $8. And I want to note that with this recommendation, Nevada residents would continue to utilize the general market pass, the non-premium pass, for the Las Vegas Strip. So, as a result, this recommendation would primarily only impact visitors traveling along the Strip. Likewise, there was a recommendation to increase the 2-hour pass from $5 to $6. This change would, again, primarily impact tourists rather than residents. Next. Recommendation number 3 was to, this is a mouthful, reduce fixed route general market reduced fare discount from 50% to 40%. Now, the American Disabilities Act specifically requires that transit agencies offer their single-ride pass at a discount of at least 50%, which we do. And the ADA does not require that any other passes be offered the same reduced rate. However, at the RTC, we have applied this reduction across all of our passes. So, after considerable discussion, the working group recommended that the RTC maintain the single-ride at 50%, but that other reduced fare passes be offered at a 40% discount. Recommendation number 4 was to, was to take the general market full fare single-ride from $2 to $2.25. Recommendation number 5 was to increase the general market monthly pass from $65 to $70, and to introduce a 15-day pass for $36, which would have offered the reduced fare pass for that 15-day pass at $21.50. Recommendation number 6 was to replace the unlimited monthly paratransit fare with a 46-trip-per-month coupon book for $100, and a 22-trip-per-month option for $50. It's a, one of the reasons they came up with this recommendation is that we had about 411 what we call super-users. Those super-users were fully taking advantage of the unlimited pass, and were costing the system about $9.1 million, which is the equivalent of about $22,000 per year per rider. So, this was certainly a very costly option, offer that the RTC was making. The last recommendation is a policy-related item. The working group recommended that we align the fixed route and paratransit service boundaries and span of service. The ADA requires that the RTC provide paratransit service in the same areas where fixed route service is offered, in a minimum, at a minimum of 30, or, I'm sorry, three-quarters of a mile beyond the fixed route service area. However, prior to June of 2010, the RTC had gone above and beyond that requirement of the ADA, and was providing paratransit service to those living 1 and 1/2 miles beyond the fixed route service area. Back in 2010, the board was forced to make a difficult decision of scaling the paratransit service area back to what's required by the ADA. This would have placed approximately 600 paratransit riders outside of the service area, and at that time, the board opted to grandfather-in those clients, allowing them to continue access in the near future. It was noted at the time that the status would not be permanent, but we didn't have a specific timeframe identified. The working group acknowledged that due to budget constraints, it was necessary, that it is at this point in time necessary to remove the grandfathered status and truly align the fixed route and paratransit service areas within the limits of the ADA. Those clients would still be able to access paratransit service if they could make their way into the RTC service area, and additionally, the recommendations also include, included aligning the span of service or the times that the paratransit service operates with the fixed route. If the fixed, for example, if the fixed route didn't operate in a part of the valley overnight, then neither, neither would the paratransit service. This recommendation was to go into effect in one year from July, so July of 2013. So, those were the original seven recommendations. As we noted, we went out, we had a public comment period, and we, we really, we went out and tried to touch as many customers as we could. We visited locations, we rode the system, we talked to the customers who were on the system, we made phone calls, emails, we had our website. We also ran articles in our paratransitions newsletter and sent letters directly out to our clients, and we ended up hearing from over 1,500 people regarding these changes, and in fact, we've even, we're, continued to receive comments this morning. And so, this data, this next slide, it shows you the breakdown of comments that we received, and this is some, this is freshy, fresh, fresh data, because it incorporates comments we received just, just two hours ago. So, you can see here on the pie chart is the breakdown of the comments we received. Most significantly, we heard from people who told us, do not, this is fixed route that we're talking about first, and they said, do not increase the general market fare. That was taking it from $2 to $2.25. We had 913 comments, or 67% of the people asked us that. The second greatest category we heard from were those who were telling us, do not increase the 30-day reduced fare pass. That was 387 for 28%. And then we had smaller groups tell us that they would support an increase with better service, that was 3% of the people, and asked us to not increase the Strip and Downtown Deuce or, yeah, Strip and Downtown Express or the Deuce on the Strip fare. That was 2%. Well, next slide, our paratransit comments. The majority of them, 70%, asked us to not eliminate the unlimited paratransit pass. We had 19% asked us not to eliminate the paratransit grandfather condition. We had 8% who requested public meeting information, and we had 3% who said they would support an increase with better service. Next slide. So, we collected these comments. We, we listened, and we also took a look at our financial condition as well. When we first started this effort, sales tax revenues were of grave concern to us. Now, this was back last, late summer, when we first started this, of last year. Since that time, our sales tax revenues have been above our budgeted forecasts, and we have talked to some local economists who tell us that although they would not expect to see continued significant increase in, in sales tax revenue, they also feel that we can feel confident that what we are receiving now will continue for the, into the future. So, we can feel confident that we do not need to take as aggressive an approach to our fare increase recommendations as we originally thought. So, we're going to walk through those seven recommendations we just presented to you. We're going to walk through with some changes to them, some of them. Number 1, they had recommended that we go from $7 to $8 on the strip.
Tina, if I could interrupt?
Sure.
For the audience, just to make it clear, the next recommendations, what staff took in from all the public comments, and although the Fair Working Group recommendations were forwarded, these are going to be a little bit different. So, this is what, we, we can certainly focus on what staff ultimately is recommending to the board, the, the next seven statements or recommendations you hear. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to continue to recommend that we increase the Strip 24-hour pass from $7 to $8 and make that effective September of this year. We are going to continue to recommend that we increase the 2-hour pass on the Strip from $5 to $6, and again, make that effective September of this year. With the fixed route general market reduced fare discount from 50% to 40%, we are going, we are not recommending that. We are, however, recommending, next slide, that we move to a true 50% discount. Right now, some of our reduced fare discounts are greater than 50%, and we would recommend that for equity, that we move all of them to a, a true 50%. And we recommend that that take effect September of this year as well. Did, would, okay. Mr. Chairman, the general market full fare single-ride pass, they had suggested we increase from $2 to $2.25. We are not going to recommend that. Likewise, we were going to increase the general market monthly pass from $65 to $70 and introduce a 15-day pass. A portion of this, we are not recommending. We are not recommending that we increase the monthly pass from $65 to $70. We are, however, recommending we do introduce a 15-day pass, but that would be for $34, and the 15-day, the reduced fare pass would be- and the 15-day, the reduced fare pass would be $17. And again, we recommend this new pass be introduced effective September 30th of this Next recommendation was to replace the unlimited monthly paratransit fare with the 46-trip-per-month coupon book for $100 and the 22-trip-per-month coupon book for $50. We still recommend moving towards a limited monthly pass, however, we are reducing the amount from $100 for the 46-trip-per-month coupon book to $80, and from $50 for the 22-trip-per-month option to $40. And we're recommending we make that effective a year from July, so not until next July, not July of 2012, but July of 2013.
We're, we're going to let Ms. Quigley finish the presentation, and then, as you come up, we'll make sure every one of your questions is answered. Thank you.
All right, and our last recommendation, we are going to recommend that we, this was a policy decision, that we ultimately align our fixed route paratransit service boundaries and span of service. We would still like to move forward with that policy recommendation. However, we recommend delaying it until July of 2015. This allows constituents who are affected opportunity to move, if they need to move, within the boundary. It also allows the board at that time to reconsider the item.
Comment, Ms. Chairman, with your permission.
That's the last of our recommendations. We do want to thank the Fair Working Group. They put a lot of hours into coming up with those original recommendations, and ultimately, they were trying to create equity amongst riders. We still, we feel that with our altered recommendations, we still get there, it's just we've got a lower impact.
With the chairman's permission, Ms. Quigley, your staff's done a dynamic job in regards to the paratransit issues that I know some of my constituents have dealt with. I want to extend my personal gratitude to all of you for helping a few certain individuals who have a very hard time getting to our fixed route system, who live out in the great northwest, and I think that's significant that the entire staff understands that. When the time comes, 2015, to possibly have this discussion again, communication is going to be a paramount concern, getting that information out there. So in case there are a few individuals who take advantage of the paratransit system, who don't have the mobility that a lot of people do, that they can make those decisions. And I know we'll certainly take that up as a board as well, but that has become such a cherished, you know, transportation and independence vehicle for them because they're not independent without that. They're stuck at home, they can't visit loved ones, they can't make it to doctor's appointments. And I'm just thrilled with what you guys have done, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner threw you to Commissioner Ross. Yes, we have about 600 people who are affected by, by this change, and so delaying this gives us ample opportunity to reach out to them and individually and talk with them about, about the effects of the recommendation.
If I can, Commissioner, I mean, Ms. Chairman, on the other, on the other item for the 15-day pass, I mean, that's a killer deal on the paratransit for the coupons, is what I'm talking about, instead of the unlimited. The unlimited is a massive burden on the system and on our finances. But those coupon books, a $1.17, I think, is what I came up with, or something like that, per trip, or $1.70, I mean, that's, that's pretty significant. And that's pretty inexpensive for anybody to use, and then they can, they can determine what trips are necessary. You know, if I'm, am I going to, am I going shopping, am I going to play bingo? You know, what am I going to go do? I've got so many trips to make. So I think that's, that's the right direction to go. I can support all of your recommendations.
Councilwoman?
And then, as we go forward, these are today's circumstances. So conceivably, as we're looking at 2015, we may be looking at some different circumstances, like different paratransit contract that may have multiple providers, say, or that you may see, for example, communities like Sun City Anthem has a smaller provider that does come up into that area. So we may be looking at some other circumstances to serve individuals around the community as well. So thank you for your work on this. I appreciate it.
Councilman, I'm going to comment on that. We're seeing, just today, we're seeing some pockets where, when we reduced, certain riders on paratransit were grandfathered. But I've got some pockets out in the northwest where people that are eligible but outside and weren't grandfathered are seeing paratransit buses go right by their homes. And it's not just in the northwest, there are spots in Henderson and throughout the valley. And I've talked to Ms. Quigley about this. This is only going to become a greater challenge as we face not only the revenue shortfalls, but the tightening of the eligibility and the routes. So there, there's a tremendous challenge awaiting us that I think, as you mentioned, with the new RFP going out on the streets, because this is going to get tougher and tougher and tougher. And we're talking about, in most cases, our seniors and our most vulnerable populations that are being literally taken away from the convenience of paratransit. But on the flip side, and it was well-stated and shown in the graphs, it's a very expensive system. And we need those existing riders to really be part of the solution. We need their input on how we can best serve the entire valley. Because it's not going to get any easier. I know many of us have had phone calls and personally met with some folks up in Sun City, Summerlin, and it was just, it was tragic because they, they needed the service but were just outside the fixed route and missed the grandfather. And the frustrating thing to them was their neighbors two doors down had, had been riding the bus, and, and again, it's not unique. So as we talk, paratransit certainly today, but more so in the next few years, we really need ultimately the contractor and riders and this board to find a different way to do business, because I think it's going to be the number-one challenge before the RTC. So with that, we are going to move to public comments.
Chairman, I'd like to just make a comment too, because you talked about some of those things, and things staff has been tasked with in the city of North Las Vegas is the beautiful veterans hospitals can be open here towards the end of the year. And we don't even have a service route towards that way yet, and staff is, you know, working diligently, trying to work that into the plan too, because, I mean, how are we going to forget our vets that's let us do everything that we do each and every day? So I want to compliment staff in their taking the time to work through that, too.
I just got an email from a constituent. Do we do family passes? Or have we ever explored family passes?
We do not do family passes. I don't know if we have ever explored family passes.
Maybe for future, because we will be revisiting. That might be something we might want to take a look at, especially if you have maybe a disabled and a, and a, and a non-disabled, and if they could ride the regular bus together through assistance, and the rate may be a little bit different, and just might be a way to encourage people not to have to do the paratransit as much as they would. I mean, because the fixed riders should not be subsidizing the paratransit either, and so that's part of what this blend and this mix in the fare rating is going to be taken in care of. And then on our nonprofits, will you have a report for how they've been able to fill the gaps to some extent so that at least we're keeping that apprised as well? Because we've got a few more groups out there that are doing that now.
Good. I'm going to see Director Sandy Stanko, if you've got comments on this. She's been working very diligently on this topic.
Just for point of clarification, Sandy Stanko, Director of Transit Services, Chairman of the Board, Commissioner. We have several nonprofits that we're working with to try to expand the network of transportation options available, so that continues to be very successful. As it relates to family members riding fixed route, if they are certified for paratransit, they can ride fixed route for free, and they can take a companion with them, a personal care attendant, so, and there's no questions asked. So if they have someone with them, they can ride fixed route also for free.
Thank you. And that part I knew. Their suggestion was when you have two spouses or two partners or more, is there, was there a family pass? And I don't recall us even doing that, just for fixed route component.
Councilwoman Haven?
Just a question on some of the other savings on this chart that we went over, and I don't think you elaborated on it, Tina. With the Medicaid reimbursements with the state, are we going to, those contracts are in place, and are we going to realize those in a timely manner?
I think Assistant General Manager M.J. Maynard will handle that.
We are working currently with the state of Nevada. We will receive approximately $2.7 million annually, based on current paratransit-eligible customers. We expect the payments to begin retro January of this year, but we probably won't be receiving the actual money until next January.
That is about 35% of the total.
Yes, correct. And we have to thank Ed Guthrie from Opportunity Village in helping us facilitate that with the state. He was very effective in creating that partnership and that alliance, so.
Thank you. Has anybody collected all the cards? I only have a few. Thank you. And, and for your information, today is a day where those that serve on other regional boards likewise have board commitments with their budget. So we've excused Commissioner March, and Councilman Ross will be leaving about 10:30 to go the convention and visitors authority because they have their budget meeting. So we'll open up the public hearing. What you'll see at the podium, the stoplight there, as it goes from green to yellow, that will be 30 seconds to close out your comments, and when the red comes on, we'd ask you to finish up. And I think we're going to have a lot of speakers, so out of respect for the number of speakers, please keep your comments as concise as possible. So we'll start with Diane, and the last name is A.I.R.D.
Diane, and the last name is Aird.
And I told you you'd be first, and here we go.
Yes, I said, you're the man. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good presentation. Very, very good. My focus is the RTC. I didn't see any notes about the standard fare for the RTC, which is currently $3. Are there any changes expected on that? No threat whatsoever. I came here because I wanted to make sure, okay? However, I've attended prior meetings, you know, on the, the matter of public comments and suggestions as to the budget. And I remember myself and also one of my neighbors that is also an RTC client made suggestions that focused on revenue generating, and I didn't see anything in this, you know, the options that you're considering. I would like to know if you're still accepting information, suggestions about possible ways you could offset the costs by providing new revenue outlets, okay? The question being, can that still be submitted to the RTC folks?
If it means new revenue, 24/7/365.
Okay. I forgot to say, the CEO of my firm, Aird and Associates, we're full-service marketing. So needless to say, I think I can throw my professional, you know, efforts into it. I am also the result of a drunk driver, which is what, you know, made me disabled and has cost me my business. Prior to them establishing that $3 across-the-board fare for paratransit, I remember we used to have to pay extra, you know, than the standard fare to go to the strip hotels. That was discontinued. It's all part of the $3. I've been speaking to a lot of passengers who expressed the concern about, you know, the border line being affixed within, you know, the orange, but the exterior areas, you're not going to be serviced. So my question is, couldn't they apply the principle that they used with charging extra to go to the strip? You know, for those outlined areas where they wouldn't have to be denied service, maybe you just have to pay a dollar or two extra, but continue to service to those? Okay?
Thank you.
And I'm going to submit a specific proposal to the RTC for their consideration.
And thank you for coming down. Is the handheld going to be more convenient?
Okay, so I live in the northwest area, and it's actually affected everybody in my household that paratransit doesn't come to my house. And so, I mean, I would really appreciate if you guys can really make an effort, like, before 2015, to try and, you know, find a way for me to be picked up from my door and taken to my destination. And also, for people who really don't need paratransit, I think you should start using the fixed route more often because I think that would definitely help them to be able to expand paratransit to riders who actually need the service from, to their front door to their destination as well. And that's really it. Just please, try and come to my house.
Mr. Chairman?
It's affecting, it's affecting everyone in my household because I want to go back to school, and, I mean, trying to accommodate all the schedules in my house to make sure that I have a ride to, you know, the address that paratransit picks me up now, it's becoming really hard. And, I mean, if you guys want us to move out of the, you know, out of the area that you guys don't go to and move into an area that you guys go to, I mean, then you guys, someone's going to have to help us, you know, pay our rent or something because the economy's bad. Not all of us can afford to do that. And maybe reduce the fare for us who have to go find a ride to get to the place. I mean, charging us $3, maybe like drop it down to $2, because you're not even making the door-to-door service as you claim you are.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Ross?
May I direct staff to get this young lady's address and see what other options are available to her so we don't interrupt her family and get, make sure she gets back to school?
Ms. Maxwell is exactly what we were talking about earlier, outside the system, not grandfathered, but obviously in need of support. And she's made a couple nice comments, so this, this is the challenge. And we thank you for coming down. You, you've captured the biggest question in front of us.
Yeah, I couldn't control where my parents decided to move to. I was underage at the time, so. I blame them now, though.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. How are you? First, I'd like to say we really do appreciate the service. I know it may seem like we don't appreciate it. We do, because it does help us with our independence. And the only other thing, since, since she outlined it a little better for me, I am a little, a lot more than what I had to say was, is not necessary. I just want to say that I understand that, I mean, it takes a lot to run the system, but it's, it's just that that's, this is our independence, you know? And as a person who works five days a week, 40, 46 rides is really limiting to where I can go, you know? And I understand that people take abuse of, I might have abused it a little bit myself. So I just want to say maybe, and I don't understand, is it 46 rides? Is that it? Can we ride after that, or, you understand what I'm saying?
Let us clarify that for you.
Sir Chairman, the 46 rides is a discounted pass, but you can continue to ride paying the single-ride pass of $3.
Oh, okay. Well, in that, in that instance, I wouldn't have a problem with the 46 rides. Actually, anything to help other disabled people still be able to get where they need to go, I'm willing to pay more or even to, to cut down my rides just to help. So I really appreciate you guys for the support, and I hope that we are able to work better together to come up with an ultimate solution.
Well stated. Thank you for coming down this morning. And Jennifer, could you state your name for the record?
Jennifer Malino is my name. And what I'm interested in talking to you guys about, especially the last few days, I witnessed on Boulder Highway a motorcycle accident last night, a pedestrian, and I wish a lot of these businesses could encourage more people to drive or take the bus. Like I said, I'd like to see the rates stay cheap since I've, I don't want to drive in Las Vegas because I've just seen too much. Like I say, I'm glad for the service that we have, and please, just keep up the good work and... I say, I'm glad for the service that we have. And please, just keep up the good work and try to ask these businesses, and I try to ask people to ride the bus, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Something else I want to state, these two-dollar passes that you get out of these machines on the bus, I wish down at the RTC they'd sell them by themselves so, you know, in case the other runs out, I have an extra one. And I'd like to see that happen, too. Thank you very much.
Lee Weiss. I apologize. Last name is W.E.I.S.S., if I mispronounced.
Good morning, Commissioners and distinguished guests here.
Hold on for a sec. It's not picking up.
There we go. Good morning, Commissioners, Board members, and distinguished guests. My name is Lee Weiss. I represent the Foundation Fighting Blindness here in Las Vegas and several blind organizations. I'll only speak upon how this will affect myself. I have two jobs. My main job is as a salesperson, traveling from home to different properties in restaurants and casinos, selling food. The proposed monthly fare for me will not work. But what I, I would like to propose is to get some kind of a committee together that the four-hundred-and-eleven people that hold the monthly passes would be able to have sort of a work or school visa, for lack of better words, and be able to have that work and school visa being forced by the RTC paratransit reservation specialist because every time you do make a reservation, you can recommend, you can ask them for an appointment for work or for school. I understand that some people ride the paratransit in excess, and I believe that if there was another way that a monthly pass could be utilized, this would be a, an opportunity to take a really good look at that situation. I also go to school at night. And as I said, I'm, also have another job. I'm enrolled in a state program where they give visually impaired and blind people work, restaurants and vending machines in government buildings. So to have the fare raised to the point where I would have to buy several books and coupons just would not be economical for me alone. And I believe that eighty-five percent of the paratransit riders now are on fixed incomes. This would be a tremendous blow to them, too, with, with the fare increases. Also, with the medical disabilities that a lot of people have, I don't think that dialysis patients would, it would work out for them either. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak with the Commission, and I will be more than glad to volunteer as, as a member on a committee for the general public and, and disabled people. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Sylvia Erwood.
Good morning.
I face this way?
Yes.
I just want to say that I'm thankful for the service as well. I've been riding paratransit since pairs started in the nineties when I was working at Walmart at the time. I just want to say that I am a college student that goes to UNLV. And I go to school about four days a week. Sometimes I go five days a week, okay? At this time, no, I'm not currently employed because I'm going to school. I'm, you know, full-time student. So anyways, what I'm trying to say is that economically, the twenty-dollar increase, you know, for me would be, you know, a bit of struggle right now because I also have four bills to pay, you know, renting a house, you know. So I have, you know, bills to pay. I, I do have a dog. And, you know, so they got to eat, you know, things aren't getting any cheaper, you know. Things are going up, as we all know. Things are not getting any cheaper. So I'm just asking if you could take that in consideration for people maybe in my situation that are trying to make ends meet, that's a college student, trying to do the best they can. Because it's, it's tough right now. It's tough right now for everybody that's in that situation, you know. I mean, my goal is to, you know, eventually have my own business and so I can, you know, you know, make, you know, decent, you know, decent living. That's what I'm working on right now, you know, skincare and cosmetics business for blind people. So women can know how to fill their faces, put their makeup on. So anyways, the other thing is I wanted to point out quickly is that, yes, I've had mobility training with my cane and my dog. But I'm just saying because we are here in Las Vegas, the way things are here, there's been over, what, thirty or forty, you know, fatalities already, pedestrians getting run down this year, which is kind of out of the ordinary because I've been here all my life. You know, I'm a vegan, and I've just never heard of so many pedestrians getting run down. So what I'm saying is, I, I just don't feel that it's best for my safety to have to cross the streets here to take the city bus when I am legally blind. And it would be, you know, safer for me as a safety precaution for me to have door-to-door service instead of, you know, taking a chance crossing the street the way, you know, a lot of people are, you know, a lot of people drive here in Vegas that are either on drugs or alcohol. So, so that's just the point, I, you know, my opinion, what I want to put out there, that like I said, just please, please take in consideration that there are people on fixed incomes that cannot afford this twenty-dollar increase if they got, you know, other things in their lives that they got to take care of as well that are responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erwood. And we're going to have, maybe have some staff members just talk to her to clarify.
Okay.
We don't want to do it now, but.
Okay.
So she.
Clarify.
She leaves knowing that it's not the twenty dollars.
Okay.
Linda Edwards?
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay? I'm Linda H. Edwards. I'm a paratransit rider. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. It's really, I'm grateful to you for this. I was a little bit dethroned because I was prepared to speak today against a one-hundred-dollar fare for forty-six rides. But now I understand the staff is recommending eighty dollars for forty-six rides, and you could pay an additional forty dollars for twenty-two rides. For me, that would take it to a hundred and twenty dollars per month. Here's what I use a paratransit for, and I'm very grateful for it, by the way. I teach twice a month creative writing at a senior center. That job is so important to me. I love my students. They get a lot out of my class. My BA is in English, and I never dreamed I'd be a teacher. I was a technical rider in my, before I retired. But this is a wonderful opportunity to get me out. I also take classes at UNLV through the OLE program, the OSHR lifelong learning program for seniors. And this is an opportunity to not only keep the brain active, but become socialized. It's very important to seniors like me not to remain fixed in their apartments or homes. I'm low-income. It's a big jump to go from eighty dollars a month to a hundred dollars a month. But I thought if it were unlimited rides, I was willing to try to swallow it. We only got a bare three percent increase in our social security, we seniors, compared to a twenty-five percent originally proposed increase in the paratransit fare. But if it covered unlimited rides for the first year, I would be willing to pay the hundred dollars because otherwise it's a hundred and twenty to do what I need to do. Then if it were the next year, for the first ride, a hundred dollars for unlimited rides during the transition, and then the eighty and for the forty-six rides, plus an additional forty for twenty-two rides the next year, I understand that's an important thing. I also suggested a year ago that they sell ads to wrap the bus because they do that on the fixed route buses. And I just wondered if that was ever taken into consideration for the paratransit buses. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Linda, for coming down. And just so, if you didn't hear, that, that recommendation is, staff wants to institute that a year from July. So it would be July two thousand thirteen.
Twenty thirteen.
Just to give a little bit of an adjustment. So it's not going to happen right away if that recommendation goes forward.
But if another recommendation is, is accepted, would that be in effect September twenty-twelve? Or there'd be no change to the paratransit till at least July twenty-thirteen?
Correct.
But now you're weighing your options. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. William Taylor.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right. My name is William Taylor, and I'm a paratransit rider. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. I noticed that they changed the proposals a little bit. That's a little better than I expected when I came down. I would like to see that if, if they're not going to continue the monthly passes, to at least make it sixty rides instead of the, what, forty-six. But then that would be at least one ride per, I mean, two rides per day, one going and one coming. Now, I'm a dialysis patient, and I do that three times a week. I also work, not presently working, but I do work, and I plan to return to school. So, you know, there, I have doctor's appointments. And sometimes that forty, that forty-six rides, for me, is not going to work like some of the other people. So I think I would like to see that something done with the people that are abusing the monthly pass system. I don't take, you know, abuse the system. But there should be some, something looked at to prevent these people from, from abusing the system. And so that the other people with, people with incomes, I have, I'm on a fixed income. And, you know, I appreciate the paratransit system as it is. So I would like to see maybe that taken under consideration as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for coming down.
You're welcome.
Alan, three-five-five-eight Platt Drive. Last name begins with a W-E-N.
Hi, my name's Alan Wendelbo, and I use paratransit also. And I'd just like to say, first off, I have a little bit of a radical idea to fix the whole paratransit system, and that would be to make the fixed route accessible to all people, like the law says. But disregarding that, I'd like to make one suggestion for if the forty-six-ride pass goes through to maybe have it so that it, that it's computerized, so that you don't have to mail out the books and stuff like that. Just have it so that the computer knows how many rides you're using and doing. And I think that would save some money on doing that as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Alan, and thank you for coming down. Jerry Holt?
I'd like to say this, that you're going to raise the prices of the handicap from forty, from thirty dollars to forty-two dollars, which, that is going to put a hurt to my pocketbook. And I'd like to keep it at thirty dollars at all costs because I'm on a fixed income. And that forty-two dollars is going to hurt me in the worst way. I got to pay the rent. I got to pay the, the lights, the gas, electricity, and cable TV. And I just don't have the extra money to pay for the, the thirty, from thirty to forty-two dollars. That's wrong, and that's hurting me.
Thank you. And we're going to have a staff member talk because we're not sure exactly what recommendation you were speaking to, Mr. Holt. So if, if you do have the time after the meeting, we're going to have someone just clarify that for you. And Judy Holt?
Why, why can't we make our own buses instead of going to France and getting them?
It's a good question. The Buy America. It's a very good question. Thank you. Esther Townsend?
I want to thank the Commission for allowing us to speak. I thank the RTC also for the paratransit service. It's a blessing. For those of us, many of us disabled, if it weren't for the paratransit, we'd be sitting home, not able to go where we need to go. And so I am very blessed and thankful for the paratransit service. I work at a full-time job at Camden Survey Center at UNLV. And I'm very active in my church. I teach Sunday School, and I'm part of the intercentric prayer team. And so three times a week in the morning, I'm headed five o'clock onto my church. And so I use paratransit a lot when I can because I know there's going to come a time when I'm not going to be able to get out and do the things that I need to do. And I don't know when that day is going to come. So while the day is here that I can, I need to be able to move as much as I can. I would be willing to do the hundred dollars if it were unlimited rides. I know I ride the bus a lot. But I was, the nearest public bus stop for me is one that I could not even begin to get to. And so if I couldn't get to it, I'd just have to sit home. And so I'm very thankful for the paratransit. And maybe if you're really interested in making some money, you might consider a weekly unlimited bus, because some weeks you're more busier than others. So maybe even if you did the hundred, broke it down to twenty-five dollars a week or thirty dollars a week unlimited rides. And to offer that to your city bus riders as well, I think you would make money. And including the advertising on your bus, you're bound to make money. And there's many of us who would be glad to be a part of your committee to do funding, look for funding and, and increase revenues. I would be very glad to be a part of that. And I thank you so much for the paratransit service.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Carmen Hancock?
Hello. Thank you. My name is Carmen Hancock. I'm reading my notes.
I'm reading my notes regarding paratransit fare increase. I would like to suggest sixty rides for a hundred dollars, for there are six months with thirty days, and five months with thirty-one days, and one day with twenty-eight days. Sometimes the, okay, I'm reading. But paratransit is my only means of transportation. I take it to the doctor's office, church, groceries, and entertainment. I am one of those people who use the paratransit because I have no family here, so I use it in excess, and I'm sorry, I have to be honest about that. I've been on the bus for ten years. For eight years, I've been buying the paratransit bus pass. I have seen fares increase and service change. I think RTC needs to look at scheduling a little bit, because they schedule the rides for the drivers to be in two places at the same time, and that's not possible. I had been scheduled for a nine-twenty-three AM pickup, and he had to be before me at nine-fifteen for someone that was eight miles away from where I live. And that makes the drivers, it's like you're setting them up for failure. On Sunday, May thirteenth, a brand-new bus, a nineteen-hundred bus, broke down. We were at Six and Alden. The bus had less than four thousand miles on it. I think RTC needs to consult with First Transit when they get these buses, because they're getting these buses and they're not desert-ready. You know, we live in a climate where it's always changing, and sometimes the buses, you know, they break down, and they're brand-new. Ending, I don't cross the streets here. I have a bus that picked me up from Samstown to take me across the street, I was on Boulder Highway, to the Chase Bank. I rode through the parking lot and went to Walmart. There have been fifty-four fatalities here, with people in these, drivers and pedestrians. So the streets are not safe, and I do not cross the street. So that's why sometimes I am a abuser of the paratransit, because I will not cross these streets. In conclusion, I just want to say that I do use the service. I don't really mean to abuse the service. I have really taken my rides down and only do what's necessary. I must go to work, I must go to church, I must go to groceries, I must go to the doctor. So sixty rides per month would be really better for me financially. I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I want to clarify also that medical trips that are Medicaid reimbursable do not count against that forty-six cap, a number of monthly rides.
And do we communicate that to our paratransit riders?
We do.
Good, let's emphasize that. Thank you. Leonard at one zero seven oh four Heritage Hills Drive, S C H R E T E R. Shredder, good morning.
Leonard Shredder. Good morning, good morning. I came here because I was concerned about the reduced fare increases. But I've had my eyes opened. I withdraw any complaint you might have for Leonard Shredder regarding reduced fare increases, and want to say that I totally support. I wasn't aware of the transit problem, transit plan problem. I wasn't aware of it at all, and I support whatever endeavor these people have to increase the areas that they, the transit service, paratransit service covers, and the cost reductions. Anything that possibly could help these people is what I'm here for now, rather than any reduced fare reduction. Thank you.
Mr. Shredder, what are we going to do about our Red Sox?
How do you know, sir?
Because you talk like everybody talked when I grew up. I'm going to say, I'm going to say South Shore.
No, Boston, Revere.
North Shore, right across the river.
Not this year, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Edward Blewett.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for hearing me. I would like to make a few comments on, first, I'm against any fare increase. In fact, I think there should be a reduction, and I'll explain why. I recently purchased the new Transit Guide, and inside the cover is an article written by Tina Quigley. And I made note of two items in that article. One is about revenue, and the other is about spending. First, on revenue, she made note of the ridership on the express, on the new express routes has grown significantly. Now, I underline that, grown significantly. That means revenue has grown significantly. We know there are more than fifty-eight million riders who rode the Transit in two thousand eleven. That's a lot of revenue. Fifty-eight million riders in two thousand eleven. Now, let's look at the spending. There is a new project just completed on Sahara, and Ms. Quigley stated, new bus shelters, widening of sidewalks, whoop, I stopped there, widening of sidewalks. Yes, some of it was widened, but let's start at Sahara Westbound at Las Vegas Boulevard, in front of the Bonanza Gift Shop. That sidewalk was narrowed. The bus shelter, the old one, was two feet further back from the road. The new one is two feet closer. If anyone is sitting at that bench, there's not enough room for a wheelchair to get by. That's an accident waiting to happen. Let's go on to Palace Station. That sidewalk was dug up, curb was dug up, wasn't widened. There was nothing wrong with that sidewalk. It was perfectly good. Dug it up, put new cement, shelter in the same place. There's always a line of people getting on. If somebody's getting off, they can't pass. They have to walk around the shelter, the stone, take a chance of twisting your ankle. It goes on and on, miles and miles of cement.
If you would conclude your remarks, if you have additional comments to make, after the agenda, we have another public comment period, but out of respect for the many speakers yet to come.
Thank you. I will just conclude by saying, there was a lot of money, now, I know that it was primarily paid for by Tiger, but there was a lot of revenue money spent on that also, and that was wasted, because there were miles and miles of concrete dug up that didn't need to be dug up, trees planted, with the canopy hanging over, the bus goes by and knocks the branches off.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Richard Mathers.
Good morning. I really recognize the need to be fiscally responsible, and I wanted to commend you for a mix of trying to solve that problem with changing routes as well as adjusting fares. That's necessary. I originally was going to speak about the proposed forty percent increase in the thirty-day reduced fare, and you folks listened to us, and your new proposal is one that I can really support. Really cannot commend you enough for also adding the fifteen-day pass. When I go buy my thirty-day pass, the vendor at Walmart, or at Walgreens says, I wish I could buy one of those. I buy a five-day every time, because I cannot afford to buy the thirty-day. So that is a good thing. As the gentleman spoke earlier, seniors and most others are in a very fixed increase, and that would have been a forty percent increase, and that is not happening. So again, thank you for listening to us. There's a gal who took my phone call, and I believe her name was Diaz, who really listened very well and got back to me. So you obviously have listened to, or thought about the reason there is a reduced fare, and I commend you for your efforts there and for having taken all the input there, although your survey of stakeholders kind of didn't hit all the bases. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mathers. Patricia Panisi.
Good morning. I first want to thank the RTC for all your efforts to reach out to us. You've ridden buses, you sent letters, you had outreach, so thank you. And also thank you for the concession, eighty dollars for forty-six rides. That's really generous. My issue is grandfather, and I understand clearly, federal law ADA aligning paratransit with the fixed route. And everyone here has their own ox to gore. So where do you draw the line? I understand what I'm about to say in your dilemma. I am exactly two blocks currently out of, and I'll just use the word, out of service, out of district. And I understand that you said the issue would be revisited in two fifteen, and again, for that, I'm grateful. I have lupus vasculitis, I'm on a waiting list for a service dog, I'm going blind. What paratransit has done for me, door-to-door, is amazing. You've allowed me to keep my independence, my dignity, my self-respect. You've allowed me to feel good about myself. You've allowed me to become, because I'm on SSDI, you've allowed me to still be a member of my community. I volunteer. I can't do that without paratransit. I have seizures, I'm subject to falling. I don't want to have to leave my house to attempt to walk to a location, to hope that I don't fall, to wait for a bus. Medically, those of us with lupus are not supposed to be in the sun. Now, you can say, well, Patty, where do we draw the line? Three blocks, four blocks, eight blocks? Draw it at two miles, draw it at three miles, draw it at four miles, five miles. But without the paratransit, I don't know what I'd do. You guys have given me a life, a life that I'm proud of. So even though the issue's going to be revisited in two fifteen, I need to prepare now and just let you know, because maybe, God bless you, if you don't need the paratransit, but if you ever do, God bless you for being there and recognizing our needs. And as far as grandfather a neighbor, it's just like a job. If you hired in at your job at twenty dollars an hour, and now in this economy, same job, maybe I'm only going to make fourteen dollars an hour. Next-door neighbor, if you were not grandfathered in, what, you know, what can I tell you? But thank you, and just know that you've given all of us a life that we can be proud of.
Thank you. Iris Gross.
North Las Vegas.
Hi, commissioners, and thank you for letting me speak. One for the middle. Thank you for letting me speak today, and I heard all the other speakers speaking, and I too am grateful that I have the paratransit, because when I lost my personal vehicle, I tried to use the regular bus, and it's half a mile away from my house, way beyond my limitations to walk. And then the walking between the transfers and then the walking home, and I was just wondering what day it was I was going to keel over going or coming from the bus. So I'm glad that I was approved. And by the way, I don't understand the expressions about abusing the system, because in the first place, you go through an eligibility process, and people are not, at the eligibility department, don't just give you a pass. They very thoroughly look at your situation, information, physical mobility, and all of that. So I don't understand the abusing, how people can be abusing the system by making use of it. Some people have more active lives than other people. I, myself, I'm looking for work, I do volunteer work, I participate in public, in organizational work, I attend council meetings. And in fact, as Councilman Elin notes, that we have a brand-new multigenerational center in North Las Vegas that is not only not accessible by the paratransit, but also not accessible by the regular bus. The paratransit Google system, when you get to a certain point, says, to try and plan your route, now you get out and you either take a cab or a car. So these things were left out of some of the planning, and also the hospital, I'm sure, the veterans' hospital. But what I'd like to point to is the fact that this system is mandated, is not a gift from the RTC or the county or anybody else. This is mandated by the ADA. So I'm kind of taken back that people thinking, saying, or thinking that it's a favor to us who are disabled. I see the yellow lights flashing. I'm sorry, I don't have my information all organized like I would have liked to, because I had some eye surgery and it made it hard to read the materials that I received. I talked to several people from the RTC who have very graciously given me some of the materials, but in doing my research, I do not think that enough is being done to make the paratransit functional, so that we wouldn't have to reduce, raise fares or reduce rides. Who is to judge whose ride is necessary or unnecessary, or where people should, could go, that they need to go, or they want to go? That is not up to anybody. And I think they need to, the commission needs to look better, as Christian Kiliani said yesterday, when looking at the health district, we need to look better at the budget and the spending. We need to take a closer look, because there should be no reason, being as it is federally mandated, but not funded, for the paratransit to consider reducing the rides or raising the rates without looking into the costs. And if the current contractor is not able to meet what they were contracted for, then perhaps it's time to look at another contractor. And I know I'm running out of time.
You are. And if you, if you would, if you want to add some additional comments, there'll be public comments out to the agenda, but thank you for coming down.
Okay, thank you very much.
And by the way, our budget agenda item is next, so if you want to learn a little bit about where the money is and where the money is not, stick around.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Charles Cortez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to argue about the fare adjustment. If I'm not mistaken, I read that you guys were forty million dollars short since the recession, which I believe started in two thousand and eight, if I'm not mistaken, which would be about an average of ten million dollars a year. But also, the bus fare has gone up two times since this has happened, one being from fifty-five dollars a month to sixty, and then from sixty to sixty-five. And now, I suppose you want to do another fare adjustment. Well, sir, I don't mean to be rude, but I don't ride the bus to save the planet. I ride it because I'm too poor, too poor to afford a car. We are the people, basically, who you go get your lunch from, our gas. We're the working poor, and to, because that's who the money's going to go towards, is the poor's going to have to pay for this adjustment, people who make under twelve thousand dollars a year, and who can barely survive. So I urge you guys to think twice before raising the fare adjustment. And that is all, and I thank you for your time.
And Mr. Cortez, likewise, I'm going to have a staff member talk to you. I'm not sure you heard the final recommendations, but we'll, we'll clarify that. I think you'll be happy with the news.
Okay.
Plama Dale. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners and board members. What I have to say is not feel-good.
If you would... If you would introduce yourself.
My name is Klamadale, and I want to say right away that I'm opposed to any kind of fare hike. I, I'm appalled by the very suggestion for a number of reasons. I really believe that the inefficiency and neglect of the office of the Regional Transportation Commission, under the leadership of Jacob Snow, the former general manager, you and your colleagues are demanding that we pay for the incompetence of Jacob Snow, the RTC, and the officers. Your office is responsible for having lost the federal funding, which has resulted in a financial shortfall, which you now seek to recoup by wounding us further. I don't hear anyone speaking about what happened, or even offering any kind of, rather, explanation or even apology for having lost federal funding. I also feel that it, your positions are a contradiction to what you're supposed to be or appointed to do for us. The public certainly is suffering from the recovery, the, just the beginning of the recovery. And we are at the early phases of recovering from an economic downturn that involved huge, enormous job losses, staggering home foreclosures, and schools and teachers left in desperate circumstances, and contradicts everything that I believe the whole public transportation system is supposed to stand for. Commuters are not meant to be used to rescue the RTC. The attempt to pass the buck is a disgrace and an immoral assault upon the very people you are appointed to serve. You are bleeding the struggling lower-middle class, and you are disrespecting the laborers and the seniors who keep this city afloat. You are well aware of the extreme wealth and luxury of the rich juxtaposed beside the poverty of those who serve them, as this young man gave, who came up and said he couldn't have enough money to, to be able to manage a fare increase. Already, the poor are drained by virtually every dime they make just to live. And if that were not enough, you, the Commissioners, stand by and watch while our federal funding for the RTC evaporated. Generally speaking, the price for community, commuting continuously rises, but the wages in the workplace does not reflect a cost of living increase by that same pace, or keeps pace with it. That means that there will be less food on someone's table, that children will have less to eat so that their parents can get to work, and yet their children will be expected to excel in school and somehow keep pace with the children who have plenty. In the final analysis, we, the community, trusted you, and you violated that trust. We expected you to work and to protect us, and yet another, we, but, as it turned out, we need yet another appointed officer to protect us from you. Jacob Snow's arrogant disregard for his public responsibility showed a venomous indifference to the sufferings and daily struggles of everyday people, and the Commissioners stood by and gave their permission to it.
Okay, Ms. Dalgard.
Shame on you.
Are you winding?
Shame, yes.
Are you winding down?
Shame.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for coming down.
My predecessor has prepared the way for me completely. This is a government-funded program. You get a contract from the government to provide senior citizens with this service. Every year, as I get older, I need the service more. First, it was immobility, now it's Alzheimer's, now it's glaucoma. I only have fifteen more years until I'm a hundred. What am I going to expect as I go each day? Now, Snow and I converse quite frequently. He promised us that he was going to request a grant so that we would not lose this, quote, "unlimited monthly pass" that affects many a person's pocketbook. No matter what their activities are, there is an effect. I, you know, I challenged him then, but since then, he's gone, the word "unlimited" is trying to become gone. Then I get a brochure saying that you have received a grant for veterans. As I read the grant for veterans, how much more in that grant than is what is entitled to the regular certified people? You know, there's only two ways that you could have this deficit: mismanagement or theft. Now, you take your choice, because I'm going to give you both. Snow is gone. Mr. Snow did not leave out of here with empty pockets and a deficit like this. I love the man, I have high regard for him, we talk pleasantly to each other when we would speak, but you are not considering humanity, you're considering yourself, and I don't know what other numbers. Now, I'm just going to get on the paratransit. I don't think the paratransit should have a darn thing to do with the street corners and the lights and all of this. If you're throwing all of our money into fixing streets and all this, I don't think that was what the Paratransit Act provided for. I'm not going to say much more, because I get very irate, because it, you know, you only have to go to school and get an education, which I tried to do, but to come out here to Nevada and see what is being done to the normal citizenry angers me very much. And I want all of you to have a nice day, and please don't live to the age of eighty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. James Romero?
No, you're going to have to put the mics away, it records. My name is James Romero. I'm a recently ADA-qualified through you RTC. I'm also veteran, United States Marine Corps, thirteen years, honorable discharge, combat veteran. A lot of things that I see that's going on with these fares is just like the casinos. Casinos used to say, "They're not making enough money." Back when everybody was prospering, they were making, hypothetically, say, five billion a year. Now, they're only making nine hundred million a year. You know what? You're still making profit. Look at all the buses you've got riding around the neighborhood with one or two people on board. Times that time, sixty or eighty buses. So I think you need to do something with the scheduling department. Again, Ms. Quigley down there, who said people abusing the system, that's only a system that was given to us. Now, all of a sudden, we're losing money, so now we're going to hammer the citizens? That's wrong. I'm all, that's all I'm going to say on that part. The other thing I wanted to say is, about a year and a half ago, you were talking about all these clients. About a year and a half ago, you had a driver who did something that was not appropriate to a client on the paratransit bus. And you guys made a mockery of him on the news as well, because what he did was wrong. Now, what I want to know is, what is RTC? If you don't know this, then shame on you for not getting this word. What is going on with the violence that is happening against the drivers for the paratransit? We have drivers that are constantly being abused. We have drivers right now sitting at home, single parents, three children, with a messed-up back, can't work, okay? And they're not getting any help from RTC. But yet, you'll go ahead and punish the drivers. Well, what about the drivers that are working for you? That's unsatisfactory, and again, if you don't know about that, then shame on you for not getting that word. Treat the customers and the drivers the same way. If you're going to hammer the drivers, then hammer the clients that are doing what we're doing for your company, and that is wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Romero, for coming down, and also thank you certainly for your service to our country.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Pete Kane, I live on Fremont Street. And your service out here is very bad for, I was a bus operator in Chicago, Illinois, for eleven and a half years. And it's a shame the way your buses are running out here, they're passing up the handicapped people, don't want to pick them up. Then when you get on, they give you a hard time, because they've had, because one lady, when I came out here before, she said that she had five wheelchairs and she wasn't picking up anybody else. I told her, "I don't care if you've got twenty wheelchair, you're supposed to pick up the handicapped people." She had room on her bus, the operator wouldn't pick me up. I got to sit out there and wait. Another problem is, right now, I have, my wife is in a nursing home over there by UMC, St. Joe's Rehab, with Alzheimer's, and I go back and forth every day to see her. And the problem is lying at night, getting home from the, from the nursing home. It's a big problem. These drivers don't want to stop, they bypass you up, they don't stop and say, "Well, I got two wheelchairs," or anything out here. They don't do that. And the one guy stopped the other night, I'm sitting there looking at him dead-on, he gets up out of the seat, there's four, there's one wheelchair on there, and four people sitting in the seat along the other side where the other wheelchair goes. He didn't say a word to those people. Then he turned around to me and told me he doesn't want to ask the people to get up. I know, being a bus operator, they're supposed to render their seat and ask their handicapped themselves to put a wheelchair on the bus. But the service out here is really bad, you miss your stop, you're like six, seven blocks out of the way, which isn't right. You're raising the fares up, I'm a handicapped senior on the fixed income also, and I don't think that raising that twelve dollars for the handicapped people is right either. And I don't think it's right for people that, I think you, what you're supposed to raise it for is for your tourists coming here. They're bringing revenue here. I don't think it's fair for the handicaps or the people that are unemployed, how are they going to get around? You know, we need, we need service out here. And I went down there and I applied for a paratransit. I got denied twice at paratransit. And my doctor says that I need paratransit, the social worker says I need it, and my, my home health care nurse says that I need it. And I've been denied twice going out there at the paratransit. What is the problem?
Thank you.
Good morning. Obviously, I don't even know what to say at this point, except thank you, and it's obviously a very heated and emotional topic for everybody. I'm with the State of Nevada Bureau of Vocational Rehabilitation and Blind Services, and I don't even watch the news anymore, and I don't know how to solve this problem, and it's not my job to do that. I have over a hundred clients as a counselor who rely on paratransit and RTC. My job is to help them get jobs and get back on their tricycles and get back to life. And they rely on you guys heavily. Probably, maybe seventy-five, eighty percent of my clients take the bus and, and need that to get back and forth, to sometimes doctor's appointments still, but largely to get back to work. And, and I'm really hard on my clients, and I demand that they look for work regularly. Sometimes five, ten job-related appointments a day, a day. So unlimited bus passes, that's really important for them. So I don't know how you're going to do it, but I really need your help and cooperation for my clients to make sure that this is a continued service for them, because with your help, we're able to put people back to work, disabled people back to work every year, hundreds of them, and turn their lives around. So I know it's difficult, and you're a business too, and, and you have hard considerations that you've had to balance, and you really, you've done a beautiful job. I don't know how you did what you did already, but that's, that's great progress, and we appreciate that. I'll bring the news back to the agency, and I'm sure that they'll like that. But whatever you can do to make maybe some kind of accommodation for those who are looking for work actively, and we can document that, or who are still needing medical treatment, that would really be appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. St. John, you can, you can be...
Who's speaking? Oh, there you are, okay.
You, you can be of assistance to the RTC. I would encourage you and your colleagues to invite some of our staff over to educate you on, and I'm sure you know much of it, but the ADA, the paratransit, the fixed route, the cost involved, the nondiscriminatory, everything. So you become a voice of the RTC to explain. I think a lot of the misinformation and poor communication usually results in the frustration to some of our riders. So you mentioned that you don't know how to solve it. We need you to help be part of that solution, especially with what you do each and every day. You need to be part of the solution and understand what we go through.
I'd welcome that opportunity, thank you.
Great, and thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on these items? There's another public comment period later, but these items. I thank you all for your patience on that. We'll close the public comment period. Turn it back to Ms. Quigley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Oh, yes, we'd like to entertain a motion regarding the proposed fare adjustment, and have you direct staff accordingly.
And if I could, just before the motion, I think Commissioner, Councilman Ross mentioned it earlier, but would you extend a thanks from the Board for those that served on the Fair Working Group? I won't read all the names, but they, they deserve to be recognized.
Absolutely.
Entertain a motion.
If I could just ask a question first...
Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I, I don't know what they're talking about, that we lost funds, or we lost federal grants, and I'm just wondering, I know time does not allow now, but if at some time, for those of us who may not have been on the RTC at that time, if they could go over with us what they're talking about. And I also wanted to say something else if I could, and that is, I noticed in the comments that came in, that we had some comments that would say something such as, "It doesn't matter what the public says, as all these things get thrown away because you've already made up your mind in advance, and you put your routes where you, you want to put them and you don't listen to us." And as a relatively new member of the RTC, I have found the RTC does listen, and in fact, what this writer is referring to are the routes, and they were changed because there were senior citizens who came up, who told us of needs, and the RTC personnel did go back and see what they could work out, did take up the little increase in sales tax and use it efficiently, and I'm sure that anything that was brought forward today that you'll be looking into. But of all the groups with whom I've worked, I would say the RTC listens the best, and really does try to make adjustments, because I get frustrated when we listen and nobody tries to do anything to change it. But you can't change some things. I wish we could, and it hurts us up here when we can't. I want you to know that. But I do know RTC will continue to try, and I, I thank you for giving me those couple of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Councilwoman, we are not sure exactly what lost funds the Speaker's referring to either, but we will reach out to her and, and learn more about what she's got.
I just know on all these boards we serve on, we are, we're getting less money, we're expected to do the same or better, and when I ask them, "Where do you want, where can we get the money for this?" Or just the people who complain, as I said recently, about the, the tunnels and everything we have to do for the waste products that are coming through our city and how we've had to spend money. All this is costing us more. The cost of building has not gone down, as, I, I don't know why it has, and everything else, we aren't getting as much money, but the costs have not gone down, as far as I can tell from the budgets with which I work. Mr. Brown?
Commissioner?
Thank you. I would echo what Commissioner Tarkan, or Councilwoman Tarkanian said. The staff has been very responsive, and we may not always agree with everything, but I do think you do listen better than many bureaucrats that are out there, so I would tend to agree on that part of it. I think there's still a misconception, we do not get federal dollars to pay for our transit system. We may get grants, we may get funding for capital, but we do not get it to pay for your fares. And having grown up in Chicago, I paid my fares. When I travel, I pay my fares. And so, the balancing act is, those folks that are the general riders, how do we make sure that they can still continue to get to work, but also make sure that we allow our, those that are qualified for the paratransit to still live in dignity and be able to get back and forth, not just to doctors... get back and forth, not just to doctors, but to work and for job opportunities in that part of it, so that you're part of the society. And that's the balancing act. And over the years, we've let the regular riders subsidize the paratransit riders. We've had, you know, it's gone back and forth in my 30 some odd years in this community. I think what the fare recommendation was a little bit, the original recommendations, I don't think I could have supported. There were some that were just too egregious that I think would have really impacted people in a negative way. But that's what you also said through these surveys and so forth, and I think the staff came back with recommendations that may not make everybody happy, but it will at least be fairer, um, to everybody involved and not make you isolated. And I think that's the very key piece. We do not want our seniors or our disabled population to be further isolated from their community. And that's why we took the action not to have 207, um, stopped. And so there's thing, we do listen. I, I do have to give credit on that part of it. I would try to make a motion, Mr. Chair, and then if, if-
Please.
I would move that we, and tell me if I get these wrong, because I had my old notes here. Increase the fixed route strip 24-hour pass from $7 to $8. The fixed routes, two-hour pass from $5 to $6. Changing the fixed route general market share discount from the reduced fare pass from $2 to $2.50 and the reduced fare monthly pass from $30 to $32.50, beginning September of 2012. Replacing the unlimited monthly paras, paratransit pass with 46 rides per month, understanding that's excluding Medicaid. So your Medicaid does not count on those. And 22 rides per month for $40 with implementation July of 2013. That gives proper notice time and then if our income or our revenue stream changes, I think that that would be one we would, would bring back. I would also suggest that we, um, look at proposing the July 2015 effective date for the aligning the fixed routed paratransit boundaries and the span of service. That gives us again, time to work with our clients, as the young woman and this gentleman that's still here with us have said, just because you live within a loop, um, is that really the best way to do business? And I think that gives us some time to be able to take a look at that. Continue to work on the Medicaid reimbursements with the State of Nevada. And did I miss? I think I got everything.
Staff, is that enough?
That would be in the form of a motion, Mr. Chair. Did I catch, capture?
Yeah, just, we would clarify that regarding the reduced fare passes, we're moving to a true, a universal 50% discount-
Discount.
Yeah, for all passes. And then I don't know if you mentioned introducing the 15-day pass as well.
No, I did not.
Okay.
Okay, introduce the 15-day pass for $36, correct?
Okay. And did you get the general market, keeping the general market at, uh, $2?
At the $2.
Yes, okay. I think you got it all.
Do you have a question?
Councilman?
Yeah, 36 is on the fixed route.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, just, just possibly for clarification, so we don't miss anything, I believe the intent of the Commissioner was to support staff's recommendations. Was that correct? Not the fare working groups, but staff's recommendations?
Yes, it is the staff's new recommendations and still thanking the fare, uh, group for their recommendations, but we made modifications to that and that's what we're entertaining today.
Right. I just, I just wanted to have you state that and make that clear, just in case for some reason we missed one little thing, that you are supporting what staff's recommendations.
So those that were made early by Ms. Quigley in capture by Commissioner G.
Correct. Right. The intent was to capture all those, correct.
Okay, with that clarification, and there's a motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Very good. Our next item is item number 40 and M J Maynard, our Assistant General Manager, will take items 40, 41, and 42.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, members of the Commission, item 40 is to receive a presentation on the tentative budget for fiscal year 2013. The R T C tentative budget for fiscal year 2013 was filed on April-
M J, if I could interrupt. I know we're gonna lose some of our-
Okay.
-paratransit riders, but for the record, on behalf of the Board, certainly thank those that took the time to come down, and I'm sure staff will echo these later, but taking the time out of your day to come down and share your opinions is greatly appreciated. Because you're, as you heard earlier, your voice does matter. So thank you.
The R T C tentative budget for fiscal year 2013 was filed on April 16th, 2012, with the Nevada Department of Taxation and the Clark County Clerk's Office. The budget has been on record at the R T C and the Clark County Clerk's Office for review by the public since April 16th of 2012. The document includes the budget for all agency funds. This presentation will be followed by a public hearing on the tentative budget and then the Commission will be asked to adopt the tentative budget as the final budget for fiscal year 2013. And our Director of Finance, Mark Trausdahl, will present.
Thank you, M J. Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Just as a note, I'm kind of disappointed everybody left. I, I have some things to say that they might be interested in. We'll start out with, uh, motor vehicle fuel tax this time, uh, just so we can get to the sales tax, uh, issues in transit. Um, motor vehicle fuel tax, a, as you can see from this chart, is, uh, decreasing. So the trend there is, uh, not a positive one. Um, and, and we're, uh, watching that very closely. This does fund one of our streets and highways programs and does support debt service for the most part. We'll get to sales tax. This is our largest, uh, tax, uh, revenue that we receive. You can see in 2007, we peaked at $179 million of sales tax. That went down in, uh, through the years to 2010, down to $136 million. Um, what we're gonna do is look at this and compare those years and see what our cumulative effect has been over the last four years. If we look at 2010, that's down $43 million in, in one year. That is significant. And this is what's caused a lot of our concern in transit. This sales tax supports transit quite a bit. That $134 million, I'm gonna go back to that slide. Those four years of losses added up is, that's $134 million out of our budget that we lost in, in sales tax alone. We go to the next slide. 75% of the sales tax goes to transit, the other 25% goes to streets and highways. So just out of transit alone, in that four-year period, that was a $100 million decline in, in sales tax. So that has caused some concern. And as we watch the budget closely and our actual results, we carefully look at how we need to adjust the service to account, to react to that kind of decline. Fair revenue. A, as we look at that, this is something that the R T C can control in, in ways by, um, with the service, uh, rates of service and, and the rates that we charge our, our customers. If we look at a four-year period from 2010 to 2013, our fare adjustments have increased revenue by $78 million in total. That doesn't quite take care of the $100 million decline in sales tax revenue. If we look at our paratransit contract cost, one thing I need to clarify here is this increase in cost here is not an increase in the, in the rate that the contractor charges us. In fact, First Transit act, has actually given us, uh, discounts. They have not increased their rate as they were contractually obligate, they could have based on their contract. They gave us some concessions in not increasing their rate. Um, you can, this is mostly due to demand. Has been talked about a little bit earlier. Our paratransit demand has increased due to the state unloading their transportation program. And now they've referred their clients to the R T C to pick that up. So that's our main concern in paratransit, is that increased demand and, and volume of rides that's been given. If we look at the four-year period of 2010 to 2013, that increase in demand has cost $36 million. As we look at fixed route service hours, the most service hours we've provided as an agency in fixed route is 1,553,000 service hours. For fiscal 13, we're down to 1,326,000 service hours. So that's 227,000 service hours that have needed to be cut out of the system. That's about 15% of the system over that, you know, over those, uh, years from 2010 to 2013. Um, relatively speaking, looking at other communities in, in the country, we've seen some systems in this past week threaten to cut 40% of their routes in one year. So this is 15% over four years. It hasn't been easy, and I don't want to make light of that, but, uh, relatively speaking, we could consider ourselves fortunate that we haven't had to cut the system even further. As we look at our cost, our contract cost on the fixed route, you can see in 2009, we were at $97 million. And this is strictly what we pay our current contractor for the fixed route service. You can see in fiscal 13 that we're down to $88 million. We look at the savings through cutting fixed route service, that savings is $33 million over that four-year period. So to summarize, that four-year period, our losses and gains, you can see that sales tax, uh, and that's really kind of hard to read, uh, sales tax, the $100 million loss, the increase in the fare revenue didn't quite cover that. Paratransit, the increase was, the cost to us was $36 million. And then the savings from cutting fixed route was $33 million over that four-year period. Um, those, if we take all that added together, we're still down over that four-year period of $25 million. So it didn't take care of the whole problem, the actions that we did take. But we did our best to look at that and carefully adjust things the best we could. A, as we look at a cost of a paratransit trip, we're down to $36.22 a ride. The old number for that prior to fiscal year 11 was $40. You might recall that. Uh, with the increase in the ridership and the demand for paratransit, we have had a little bit of economies of scale. There we've, uh, the cost per ride's actually gone down a taste. But it's still $36. And with collecting an average of $2.26 per ride, we're subsidizing each ride to the tune of $34 for each paratransit ride. Uh, there were a few comments earlier about the, uh, fixed route and what we charge for that. You can see here that our cost, average cost for our fixed route rider is $2.16. Our revenue is only $1.11. So the sales tax subsidizes $1.05. So we're still in a subsidy situation with fixed route. With limited sales tax, there's only so much that can be provided, so much service that can be provided as both fixed route and paratransit require subsidies. Moving on to the cost of fuel, that, that's a concern for us. We do have a fuel hedge that's expiring here June 30th. We, we're fortunate to lock in fuel at $2.44. This is diesel fuel. In March, uh, the cost of that fuel was $3.53, uh, per gallon. We've budgeted $4 a gallon for 2013. And due to the high price of fuel at this time, we're recommending that we do not lock in a fuel hedge at this time. Moving to streets and highways, uh, these programs, we've, uh, borrowed extensively on them and have debt service. Uh, with, after fiscal 13, you can see that those programs fall off dramatically to where we're at about $20 million between both the motor vehicle fuel tax program and the sales tax program. Those, uh, 14 and forward are pay-as-you-go type projects. Our funding sources, or the, this is, uh, this should be funding sources and not uses. Uh, so the, the slide's a little bit, uh, wrong, it, it's wrong with how it's titled at the top. That should be sources. You can see our sales tax is 43%. Um, you can see that motor vehicle fuel tax is 17%. Passenger fares is 20%. And our federal grants and some state grants is 17%. I am personally not aware of any loss of federal funding for grants. We've been quite successful in getting a lot of federal money for grants. I, I don't know where those comments would have come from. And then our funding uses, you can see services and supplies that is mostly, uh, related to our transit service. You can see capital outlay for fiscal 13 is still a large part of our budget. Debt service is at 16%. Salaries and benefits for the R T C is at only 6% of our total budget. And that concludes my prepared remarks. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
Comments or questions from the Board? Commissioner June Kiliani.
Thank you. I completely forgot to mention, as we were dealing with the fares, about the fact that the expiration of our purchasing of the gas, the good deal on the gas cost is really going to have an impact and somewhat of an unknown. But having put $75 in my tank the, just two days ago, um, I can imagine what it's gonna cost us price-wise as we do that, um, that purchase. So that's going to have a huge impact. And while we're starting to see an uptick, it just isn't quite there yet. And, um, so I think that unfortunately, you know, are there areas we could tweak in the budget? Yes, we should still be looking at it. Looking at our management, how much we do there, what our costs are. Do we have fixed costs? Is there a different way of doing business, you know? Um, some of that though saves less than a million dollars in some cases, but we should do that so we don't actually have to offset rates at some point in time. Um, whether it's looking at, uh, District Attorney assisting us or, um, looking at exploring family passes. I thought the paratransit route, uh, wrap was kind of an interesting concept for generating some revenue. So there are other places we could look. But I do think in the new contracts, we could also look at doing some, if there's, in the innovation side, if there's some shared services or shared revenue streams that we might be able to explore with some of the companies that might do business with us, that might also give us some pool of dollars to be able to assist. But I think the budget is pretty, um, bare bones and we already saved money with Tina's contract today, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Tarkanian.
She mentioned about the, the gas situation. I, I was also thinking, as we were discussing previously, I, I had hosted a meeting recently where we went over the federal government's support and financial, um, resources for, um, medical needs. And I think Medicaid is, is going to be cut more. And I believe that it might affect some of this. So what I'm trying to say is, it's hard sometimes for those who aren't getting all these facts to understand. But while we think we're getting a little bit more of the sales tax, we're being cut other places too. And other federal, state agencies are doing the cutting. So that's, that puts us in a bad situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Three quick ones. I think with the talk on Medicaid, and I know Ed Guthrie has been working closely with the organization. Could we capture that in a little briefing to the Board? As far as where it was, what we're working towards percentages? I think that's certainly from my perspective, important for us to understand that a little bit better. Uh, page six. Mark, if you could extrapolate out a little further, not today, but again, back to the Board. I'd be interested in taking those subsidies, multiplying it by the number of rides and fixed and paratransit, and have a true subsidy dollar. Uh, not that, I, I think that's important information to have when people challenge as far as what we're spending and what we're subsidizing. And then likewise on page eight, if we could take that, uh, 2013 funding sources and go back five years, and I think you've done this before, Mark, maybe even at the Finance Committee, and just give us a perspective of that five-year window, where we were and where we are on that pie chart. That would be great. Okay, our next item is to open up a public hearing on the tentative budget. Is there anyone here? I can't read that clock. Is it still this morning? This morning that wishes to speak on the, the tentative budget? Okay. See?
Does this budget then account for the recommendations the Board just approved on items 38 and 37 and 38?
No.
Okay, so this will approve the finalized budget, but again, we'll do an augmentation or a change depending on what that would be, and then we submit that to the Legislature. Okay, thank you. If you've closed the public.
We will close the public hearing.
I would make a motion to approve that final budget, understanding that there will be modifications based on the action that the Board previously took.
And that would be on item number 42.
Mr. Chairman, item 42 is to adopt the final budget fiscal year 2013 and direct the Department of Finance to transmit the final budget as adopted to the Nevada Department of Taxation. Upon adoption of this final budget, the expenditures as detailed will be appropriated for the purposes indicated for fiscal year 2013. Nevada statute 354.596 requires submission on or before June 1st. Adoption of the final budget must be preceded by a public hearing on the tentative budget on the third Thursday in May. Once adopted, the final budget becomes a legal financial operating plan for the RTC. Therefore, the Commission is being asked to adopt the fiscal year 2013 final budget as prescribed by law as a financial operating plan for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012, and staff recommends approval.
That was my motion.
Now, do we have time between now and June 1st to amend, or do we augment further down the road?
Yeah, anytime, yes.
All right. Very good. Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 43 is to discuss confidential matters related to the Service Employee International Union contract negotiations with management. You may want to consider taking item 44 before that, which is to conduct your last citizen's participation period.
Good suggestion. We're going into closed-door session, but prior to that, we will hold our public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak to the Board on any matters, welcome to step forward. Iris, I know that you had additional information to share. We are under item 44, citizen participation.
Thank you again, Iris Gross. I wanted to bring up the word equivalent service. This is regarding the paratransit. Equivalent services provide to passengers with disabilities, that is, as good as the type of service provided to passengers without disabilities. I wanted to mention that when we were talking about, I know you just voted on the fare limitations. I wanted also to refer, or I should say, the ride limitations. I also wanted to refer to the grants that were mentioned regarding the grant, there are two grants, the Freedom, let's see, I don't see so well because I just had some eye surgery, the New Freedom and the JARC funding. That sounds really swell, but it's being contracted out, which I guess that's the mandate of those grants, to other entities who are now, will be using, they're nonprofits, and they will be using eligibility requirements related to income. Most of the contractors, the nonprofits, they have area limitations, and they also have income guidelines, and now we get into the federal guidelines of poverty levels and all of that. So while people here have said they are lower income or limited income, fixed income, those incomes would not meet those eligibility requirements, so I wanted to point that out. I noticed that there was no other alternatives being suggested, and I mentioned earlier, maybe the spending should be looked at. I also wonder if you have considered raising the rates, or have you raised the rates, I don't know what they are, to subscription service providers, because according to the ADA, you can charge them more rate for, talking about the Medicaid funding or service to providers, that it, I have a quote, but I won't be able to find it very quickly, from the law that says you can charge them more for a subscription service. The other thing is the TIGER, Tiger Grants under the American Recovery Act. After that, and I also am aware that, from what research I was able to do, that a lot of these grants are not available for operating costs, they're only for capital costs. And the research I was able to do in the last couple of weeks, I tried very hard on the Internet to find grants for operating costs. However, in 2009, there were supplemental appropriations to the ARRA for operating assistance, and is now, was passed that you could spend 10% of that grant on operating costs. So that's the Urbanized Area Formula Program 5307. I didn't get a chance to address it with the staff. The other quick thing I wanted to say was, the people that are, the RTC people that I've talked to, as I said earlier, were very gracious. The bus drivers are some exceptional people, but as somebody mentioned earlier, the security is very bad on those buses. At any time, some of the mentally ill people I'm riding with could possibly attack me or the bus driver. They have a right to ride the bus too, but there are no, as far as I have observed and asked, measures in place to deal with these emergency situations other than calling 911, which is not going to be very fast when somebody's on top of you strangling you, as I've heard happen to some bus drivers. The other quick thing I'll say is, the scheduling system, there is something wrong with this scheduling system. It needs, I don't know if it's out of date, I couldn't get that information, I was told it's updated, or, you know, every once in a while. There's something wrong with the system when I am going north, but first I'm going to go way south to pick up somebody who's going to go north too. It is a shared ride system, it's the mantra of the paratransit, it's shared rides, however, it doesn't make sense to take somebody way south to go north, and I just think that there's some savings that could be involved in looking at the scheduling system. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the Board? Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Before you speak and before the clock starts, for the Board's edification, had the privilege of meeting with Ms. Anderson last week, we talked about bringing back the 213 route to Penwood, breaking the system in two, bus stops being very messy, the Alta Route, which I think was fixed to your satisfaction, concern about the drivers, wheelchair needed on the Charleston 203, a different bus, fare increases, which we certainly talked about today, and bus service to Mountain's Edge with a big question mark, when? So that was what we spoke about. Now, please.
Okay, well, like I said, good morning, and I appreciate you, Larry Brown, for taking time with me last week. I've heard very much. I was wondering if you had made, as far as the driver's concerned, as far as their money is concerned, I fairly feel it should be retroactive from December. These drivers are really, they work very hard. They need their $265, their money back into their pay, retroactive. That would be my, that was a suggestion we talked about. And they also need more recovery time. The recovery time, like we talked about before, they need, because actually from Fort Apache, say, to Boulder Highway, and they're, they're starting back again, they need 15 minutes to recover, to drive back again, and I think they need that time to relax, if it's possible for them. That would be my suggestion. I know also, I mentioned too, I don't know if you have, they nearly need a pension plan. That was another thing I was still thinking about, I don't know if it can be arranged, whatever, but they work very hard. I don't know what decision you've made, Larry Brown, I understand, I guess, I know you, I don't want to take up more and more time, but if, if it's possible, they will, I would like them to have their money back, retroactive from December, $265, and they, you know, they work hard, and they're good drivers. So I don't know, you know, if you, I want me to call you, or you want to talk to me again during the week, whatever.
We had quality time together. I will have staff talk to you the second go-around, and then I'll wait for the third go-around.
Oh, so you have, all right then, so anybody can talk to me later, it'll be fine. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Commissioner and the Board of Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak again. Based on from quite a few public comments that I've heard throughout this meeting, I urge you to take a look at getting a committee together made up of a few riders from paratransit, few riders from fixed route, and some RTC people, along with maybe a budget person in that group of people. From my understanding, through RTC, on a weekly basis, there's 180,000 riders that ride the fixed rate, the fixed route buses. The paratransit buses, my understanding, the number is approximately 1,800 to 2,000 people. It seems like the paratransit is, budget is being cut more drastically than the fixed route buses to make up the budget shortfall. So I think with this committee, that may or may not happen, we may be able to talk it out and find a reasonable solution to the problem. Most people will agree, prices do go up. I mean, very, very little do prices go down, especially in fuel, transportation costs, and salaries for the drivers. But I think we all realize that, and it's important to all of us to actually sit down and try to work this out together as a team instead of forcing something down our throats. And I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, and again, I have no problem volunteering to be put on a, on a committee, and I think that my associates would urge me to speak for them too, for the blind community. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the Board? Mr. Martinez, you've been here all morning. Take a pass. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll close the citizen participation meeting, and we will.
I would make a motion, Mr. Chair, to go to. I would make a motion to go into closed-door session for the purposes of NRS 241, et cetera, whatever that is.
Pursuant to NRS 288.220. Yes, why don't we take a vote on that motion? There's a motion on the floor, thank you, Lois. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, we will move into closed session.